Good morning, everyone. So nice to see everyone back in this conference room. It's been a while. Thank you very much for being here. This is the Committee on Water and Land. This is Tuesday, March 14th, 9:30 a.m. And the first fill-up in our agenda is Senate Bill 44 relating to state water code penalties. First up, we have testimony from Chair Chang, DLNR.
Good morning, Chair Ishiyama and members of the committee. Dawn Chang, Chairwoman of Department of Land and Ocean Resources. We strongly support this measure and we stand on our written testimony.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Everyone who signed up to testify on Senate Bill 44? Anyone else would like to offer testimony on this measure? Case in none, members, any questions? Okay, staying none, moving on to Senate Bill 67. This is relating to commercial activities on beaches. Testimony from DLNR Chair Chang or her designee.
Again, Chair Ishiyama, members of the committee. Dawn Chang, on behalf of DLNR, we stand in support of this measure and we stand on our written testimony.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Next, we have testimony from Ji-Ji Zhong from CARES in opposition on Zoom. Not present. That's everyone who signed up to testify on Senate Bill 67. Is anyone else who would like to offer testimony on this measure? Oh, please come forward.
Hello, Kaka Yaka, Chair Ishiyama, Vice Chair Poi Poi members. Ilhia Johnson, on behalf of the Hawaii Tourism Authority, we support the intent of this measure, defer to our good friends at DLNR on the implementation, and we also want to recognize all of the businesses who are complying with the existing laws and the spirit of sharing the beach with everybody. Mahalenui.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Anyone else would like to offer testimony on Senate Bill 67? Case in none, members, any questions? Okay, staying none, moving on to Senate Bill 298 relating to Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. First up, we have Administrator James Barrows.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair.
James Barrows from Hawaii Emergency Management. The agency stands on our written comment and support the bill.
Okay, thank you very much. So everyone who signed up to testify today on SB 298? Anyone else would like to offer testimony on this measure? Case in none, members, any questions? Okay, next is Senate Bill 786 relating to search and rescue. First up, we have testimony from Department of Law Enforcement.
Stand in support.
Thank you. Next, we have testimony from Honolulu Police Department on Zoom.
Morning, Chair Ishiyama and members. I don't know if you can hear me now, but...
Yes, we can hear you.
Sorry, Major Piva was called away on urgent business, so I'm testifying on our behalf. Yeah, my name is Derek Balleroso. I'm the captain over HSD. We oppose this bill and we stand by our written testimony. I'm here for questions if anybody needs.
Thank you very much. Let's see, Robert Lee from HFFFA on Zoom. Not present, okay. We also had late testimony from Fire Chief Sheldon Howe, Honolulu Fire Department. Not present. Or Fire Chief from Maui Fire Department. Not present. Okay, that's everybody we had sign up to testify today on Senate Bill 786. Anyone else wishing to offer testimony on this measure? Case in none, members, any questions? Okay, let's see. Next, we're moving on to Senate Bill 831 relating to the Department of Agriculture. First, we have Department of Agriculture. Chair Hurd.
Good morning, Chair Ishiyama, Vice Chair. Members of the committee, Sharon Hurd, Department of Agriculture. The department stands on its written testimony in support of this measure.
Thank you very much. Okay, next, we have testimony from Brian Miyamoto, Hawaii Farm Bureau.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Members of the committee, Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. The Hawaii Farm Bureau will stand on its written testimony in support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Miyamoto. So everybody who signed up to testify on Senate Bill 831 today? Anyone else would like to offer testimony? Case in none, members, any questions? Okay, staying none, we're going to move on to Senate Bill 832 relating to education. Testimony from Department of Budget and Finance offering comments. Testimony from Chad Farias, School Facilities Authority.
Morning, Chair, Vice Chair. Members of the committee, Chad Farias, School Facilities Authority. We stand on our written testimony in support. Available for questions, thank you.
Great, thank you. And finally, City and County of Honolulu with comments. Okay, that's all the written testimony, testifiers who signed up on SB 832. Anyone else who would like to offer testimony on this measure? Case in none, members, any questions? Okay, staying none, we're going to move to Senate Bill 833 relating to the Wahihua irrigation system. And first up is DLNR Chair Chang.
Good morning, Chair Ishiyama, members of the committee. We are offering comments on this measure. We specifically would request that certain TMKs that are not related to DLNR mission be deleted or transferred to the appropriate agency. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Chang. Next, we have testimony from Agribusiness Development Corporation, Mr. Nakatani or his designee.
Chair, Vice Chair, committee members, Mark Takemoto with ADC. We stand in support of this measure on our testimony.
Thank you, Mr. Takemoto. Next, we have testimony from Hawaii Department of Agriculture Chair Hurd.
Good morning again, Chair Ishiyama, members of the committee. The department supports this measure, but we do have a comment that DOA shall acquire the dam and spillway and the parcel on which the spillway is situated until the appropriate and necessary repairs and rehabilitation are completed, at which time those assets and other responsibilities will be transferred to ADC. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Hawaii Farm Bureau, Brian Miyamoto.
Thank you, Chair, Vice Chair. Members of the committee, Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. You have a written testimony in support. We just wanted to, again, emphasize that we can't afford to lose sources of water, and this is a critical and important water resource for our farmers on Oahu, all the end-users. We don't know of any farmer or any other entity that can potentially purchase this system. We're concerned that it is purchased by a private owner. Will they continue to provide the water for our farmers and ranchers? Or will they raise those water rates for our farmers and ranchers? So we ask for your support of this important water source for farmers and ranchers here on Oahu. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you. Testimony from Daniel Nellis, Dole Food Company.
Good morning, Chair and Vice Chair and committee. We've submitted our testimony and we stand on our written testimony and available for any questions. And just want to reemphasize that this is a public good and it should be owned by the state, the Wahihua irrigation system. And agriculture in North and Central Oahu is dependent on it, as is Dole's agriculture. And we're hoping that we can transfer this to the state and it will continue forever.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, testimony from Zachary Matsunaga in support. And that's everyone who signed up to testify today on Senate Bill 833. Anyone else who'd like to offer testimony on this measure? Oh, yep. Debed.
Good morning, Chair. Sorry, here written oral support on this measure. As you heard from Dole and Hawaii Farm Bureau, this water resource is critical for economic viability for ranchers and farmers on the North Shore area and central Oahu. Just asking for your support, thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Wicker. Anyone else who'd like to offer testimony on Senate Bill 833? Case in none, members, any questions? Chair has a couple of questions, maybe for Chair Chang. I did note in your testimony your request that certain parcels instead be moved to ADC or DOA.
Right.
And I don't know if you want to come up to the podium, but have you had conversations with them about what would be the more appropriate? Is it DOA or is it ADC?
We have, Ian, do we know specifically on these parcels which one would go to ADC or DOA?
I think, well, I think basically all of them would go basically to one of the agencies. My understanding from, oh, I'm sorry, Ian Hirokawa with DLNR, sorry. Our understanding is, you know, the DOA's intent is to not have any holdings here once the rehabilitation is completed. So our understanding is that perhaps all of these parcels would go to ADC at the end. But just to give background on why our comments is that, you know, DLNR's involvement is for recreational purposes, to support the expansion of the Wahihua, the Lake Wilson Park, the freshwater park in Wahihua. And these parcels, although included under DLNR, are either far, kind of far away from that footprint, or also they actually have irrigation system infrastructure. So we're saying, you know, we're not opposed to them being included, but not necessarily for DLNR's ownership. So, but like I said, our understanding would maybe go to ADC, given DOA's comments about transferring there wherever they are.
And we also understand that, I think, the desire is to keep all the parcels in so that it would be subject to further negotiation. But again, I think DLNR just wanted to be very upfront and be very transparent that these parcels, they are not necessary for our mission, but we support the overall intention of this bill.
Okay, got it. Second question, is your testimony mentioned additional resources would be needed for Dole Care?
Yes.
Do you have an idea of, I mean, you mentioned a separate Dole Care office. Do you have an idea of what?
I think we've asked for four positions.
Yeah, I don't think those are, I don't think we know exactly the extent of what Dole Care resources. The four positions we asked for are for state parks because they'll be assuming management of the additional area. So it would be four general labor positions, and we feel that the $500,000 would cover the salaries and also any incidental costs that we would incur sort of immediately on acquisition.
And I think with the Dole Care officers, there is a desire to have greater presence. So we would want Dole Care to assess that and actually having a physical presence in the area because of the large homeless encampment. So I think they recognize that this is going to be far beyond their current capacity. They're willing to explore that, but I think once they can determine whether they need a facility or not, they'd be able to provide a much better estimate of costs.
Okay, well, I certainly hear their concerns about the homeless and public safety, you know, issues. So if maybe you folks can work with Dole Care on what could be needed?
Sure.
I just want to make sure that we're prepared for that scenario and we give you folks the resources that you need to address it upfront.
Appreciate that, and we will get that information to you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. ADC? Mr. Takemoto?
Yes, Mark Takemoto with ADC.
Just heard this conversation we had about the TMKs.
Yes.
Do you feel ADC is the appropriate place for those TMKs?
Well, I think we all feel that this project is really important, so we want to make sure that we move forward on this. And, you know, that's kind of the discussion that I think we'll figure it all out in the end before this happens. We certainly are in support of this, and so, you know, when you have property that perhaps, you know, right now due diligence hasn't been done, so I think we want to go through that and we'll take a look at all of this. But we could certainly, because we want this to move forward, we could figure out what we could do with that.
Mr. Nakatani, do you want to add something?
I would say well said. I think that what we came out is, you know, there's a lot of moving parts. And like the last year, I think this is the due process, you know, the due diligence process that we want to go through. So the question on TMK is like to put everything in, and then if it doesn't fit, then we take it out. But if somehow you have to do funding or anything like that, if it's not in, then it might be left out. So a lot depends on the negotiation team that the governor will select to figure out everything. But I think that it's a good bill, step forward to, you know, get this thing rolling. So ask for your support, thank you.
Okay, so if I'm ready, here you're saying is you're not opposed to taking on these TMKs instead of DLNR? Okay, got it. Thank you. And then finally, Chair Hurd for Department of Agriculture. I just want to clarify in your written testimony, you said that you no longer need the $1.5 million appropriation. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so we'll delete that section. I believe it's...
Is it still there?
Section three on page five of the bill?
Of the bill, of the bill, yes. The, we've been assured by the committee, the negotiating committee, that the amount of funding that we will get for repair and upgrade is going to cover the costs. And if not, if something is uncovered that is unforeseen, that they will be covering the additional costs to bring it up to dam safety standards. So we agreed to remove the 1.5. I think the amount that we're getting, that we've been allocated was 21 million, so I think that should be sufficient.
Okay, so should we delete that section on page five, section three?
Let me look again, just to be sure.
Okay.
This is of the bill, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Page five, section three. What line is that?
Line five? Page five, line five?
I'm looking at SB number 833 SD2?
Yep.
Page five, line five?
Yep.
I don't see 1.5. It says, I'm sorry, but yes, if it's there, please delete it.
It's a blank amount right now.
Oh.
It's blank, yeah, yeah, yeah. I think they just left it in, but they left it blanks. But I just want to make sure that's the correct section that you're saying you don't need anymore. So it's an appropriation to Department of Agriculture to repair?
No, I think that's where the 21 million would go in.
Oh.
Yeah, so she's pointing that out to me. So do we want to delete that? No, that's where the 21 million would be inserted. It's the additional 1.5 to, would have made it 22.5. That's the 1.5 that we're talking about. So I think, I'm hoping, in that blank section would be 21 million.
Okay, so keep that section in.
Yes, thank you.
And that'll be 21 million.
Okay.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm sorry, Chair, Hurd, follow-up question. If you're able to give us the amounts for the rest of the appropriations, that way we can put them into the committee report for the finance committee?
The rest of the amounts?
Yep.
I believe, we are only responsible for the upgrade and the bringing it up to dam standards, so that was the only part of the appropriation that I was really focused on. I think the total amount of this project was 46 million initially.
Forty-six.
But I think, you know, everybody, I think ADC might have the bigger number for you because at some point, Dole, in all their generosity, donated parts of the dam, so the 46 million was reduced, but I'm not sure by how much. So the 46 million was reduced, but I'm not sure by how much.
Oh, okay, okay. Thank you, Chair. Maybe if I can have ADC come back, sorry. Mr. Nakatani and Mr. Takemoto. No worries. So just following up, there is an appropriation in here to ADC. Do you know how much that needs to be?
I think that was the Senate put in 800,000 for operational.
Eight hundred?
Yeah.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Okay, thank you, members, for your indulgence. Appreciate it. And are there any other additional questions on this bill? No? Okay. Next, we'll move on to Senate Bill 1254 relating to the Ka'ivi Coast. And testimony from DLNR, Chair Chang.
Good morning, Chair Chiama and members of the committee. Don Chang, on behalf of DLNR. We support this measure with some proposed, some comments, and otherwise we stand on our written testimony. Thank you.
Thank you, Chair. Lisa Bishop, Friends of Honolulu Bay, on Zoom.
Aloha, Chair. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Please proceed.
Thank you very much. Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair and committee members. I'm Lisa Bishop with Friends of Honolulu Bay, and I thank you for the opportunity to testify in strong support of Senate Bill 1254. The lands of the Ka'ivi Coast extending from Hawaii Kai to Waimea Manalo for almost seven miles are an invaluable natural asset for the people of Hawaii. Framed by dramatic Ma'ukata Makai views and natural landscapes, cultural and historic features, popular recreational areas and landmarks such as Koko Crater, Honolulu Bay, Makapu Lighthouse, and the lava tube known as Holo Nebloho. Ka'ivi comprises the last wild and undeveloped coastal lands in east Oahu. Designating the Ka'ivi Coast scenic shoreline and adjacent lands as a Ka'ivi Coast State Park is a culmination of an extraordinary and unwavering decades-long commitment by the entire east Honolulu community to protect and preserve this last undeveloped acreage in east Oahu, Oahu in perpetuity. And we strongly urge you to pass Senate Bill 1254. Mahalo for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Ms. Bishop. That's everybody who's, we have signed up to testify on SB 1254. Is anyone else who'd like to offer testimony on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to move on to Senate Bill 1286 relating to the Hawaii Community Development Authority. First up, we have T-Bed. Thank you. Next, we have Craig Nakamoto from HCDAs.
Good morning, Chair Chiama, Vice Chair, Poipoi, and members of the committee. Craig Nakamoto, Executive Director of the Hawaii Community Development Authority. We stand in support of this bill in a, just if you'll indulge me, if passed, the bill would allow the Hawaii Community Development Authority to enter into 99-year leases for non-seeded lands, on non-seeded lands. And it could provide an opportunity to develop more affordable housing, both for sale, leasehold, and rental housing on such lands. So we welcome, we ask for your support of this measure. And I'm available for questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nakamoto. That's everyone who have signed up to testify on SB 1286. Anyone else who'd like to offer testimony on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none. Moving on to SB 1391 relating to administrative penalties on public lands. Testimony from DLNR?
Thank you, Chair Chiama, members of the committee. Don Chang, on behalf of DLNR. We stand in strong support of this measure and we stand on our written testimony. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Chair Chang. It's everyone we have signed up to testify on SB 1391. Anyone else that's offered testimony on this measure? Seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, next, moving on to Senate Bill 1469 relating to the First Responders Technology Campus and Cybersecurity Data Center. First, we have testimony from Department of Law Enforcement.
Good morning, Chair Chiama, Vice Chair and members of the committee. My name's Mike Vincent, I'm with the Department of Law Enforcement, and we stand in strong support of this measure. This initiative actually has been going on for a number of years now. And the idea of consolidating all of our first responders in a single location has a lot of advantages with respect to training, you know, co-location, housing, actual security of all the facilities, especially with our cybersecurity center up there. The ability for them to put in the infrastructure needed to conduct their work. It's a good opportunity for the state of Hawaii to actually have a premier opportunity and place for all of our first responders to get first-line, real-world training and have a home that they can call their own, and a place where others can actually come to be trained from either statewide or other places. It's just a great opportunity. I'm grateful for the opportunity for you folks to hear it and ask that you continue to support it. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your testimony. Next, we have Administrator James Barros, Haima.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, committee members. We've provided testimony in support of the bill. And for Haima, we would have a small portion of this much larger campus, but it will allow the agency to modernize and get out of our ancient current facilities. So we're looking forward to that. Thank you.
Thank you, Administrator Barros. Next, we have testimony from CIO Doug Murdock, ETS.
Aloha, Chair and members. I'm Doug Murdock, the Chief Information Officer from Enterprise Technology Services. We'll stand on our testimony in strong support of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Murdock. Testimony from Craig Nakamoto, HCDAs.
Good morning, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Craig Nakamoto, Executive Director of Hawaii Community Development Authority. We have been working with Hawaii Technology Development Corporation and the Hawaii Emergency Management Agency, both for the development of the campus and then with Haima for the planning and design of their facility. And we strongly support this bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nakamoto. Next, we have testimony from Honolulu Police Department on Zoom.
Good morning, Chair Chiama, Vice Chair and members of the committee. My name is Lieutenant Joseph O'Neill. I'm the Acting Captain of HPD's Information Technology Division. I'm here for Major Steven Silva who couldn't attend. HPD stands on our written testimony with concerns related to this bill. I'm available for questions if needed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, we have testimony from HTDC, Mr. Len Higashi.
Aloha, Chair, Vice Chair, members of the committee. Len Higashi, Hawaii Technology Development Corporation. We stand on our testimony and support. I did want to highlight regarding the federal funds used for the project currently, Haima's planning and design money is coming from the federal government. And we have upcoming briefing for the congressional delegation to explore future opportunities. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Higashi. Okay, let's see. Dave Molyneux, Our Revolution Hawaii, on Zoom.
Good morning. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Yeah, we stand in strong opposition to this bill. First of all, it violates the statutory purpose that it's supposed to be for. It's because, it's to, it's not going to facilitate the growth and development of commercial technology industry. Nor will develop a commercialized innovation, research, and technology workforce. That is what this is supposed to be for. That is not what we're going to get if we pass 1469. The second problem is that the water situation, we're talking about half a million gallons of water every day. We're already in a drought. The Board of Water Supply has warned us that we have a serious water shortage already. And to add additional half a million gallons of water a day, where are we going to get that water from? The Red Hill Facility is still leaking and is still threatening our aquifer. It can still be permanently contaminated. We may not have enough water for what we already have. This is ill-advised. It's, it's not a good purpose. And we already have these facilities. They, you know, it's just a, it's a boondoggle in a lot of ways. So anyway, we, the Board of Water Supply, you should be talking to them. They're not, they're not even in the process here. But where are we going to get this water? And this does not fulfill the statutory purpose of what this is supposed to be for. Thank you very much. You have a good day.
Thank you, Mr. Molyneux. Okay, that's everyone who signed up to testify on Senate Bill 1469. Is anyone else who'd like to offer testimony on this measure? Members, seeing none, members, any questions?
For HCDAs, probably. The bill appropriate.
Okay. Mr. Nakamoto, HCDAs?
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi.
Vice Chair.
The bill appropriates, or asks for an appropriation of 50 million for FY 2324 in the same sum thereof for 2425. Can you inform us on how, what that money would be used for?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Yes, I can. So the 50 million in the request is really to build infrastructure, backbone infrastructure for this facility. It would be to do grading, lay pipes and electrical for this first phase of the development of this parcel.
The first phase is for the Haima relocation?
It could include Haima and it could include ETS as well. The way we chose to, you know, do, fund or ask for funding is to ask for it in tranches, knowing that we may not be able to get the whole, you know, the funding at one time. So this is for a sort of a subset of Phase A to do this.
Is, has the scope of the entirety of the project been reduced or amended in any way, or is it the plan still to develop the full, almost 300 acres?
I think the, I think that right now the focus is to develop the main campus, main campus of that. That's always been the main focus. At some point, there may be, down the road, we may do other parts of the campus, but right now it's a main campus where the buildings and the headquarters will be housed.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Vice Chair.
Mr. Nakamoto, if you could just stay up there. Is there a follow-up question?
Yes.
Rep. Don, you did?
Yes. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm trying to understand the necessity of this campus. Is it, is it better to have all of these different state organizations in one place rather than like in different places in case of an emergency? I mean, you know, roads closed if you have a hurricane or other instances?
I think, I think the testimony that you received from, you know, Executive Director Barros and Director Vincent, I think spoke, really speak for themselves. I think it's a matter of co-locating some of these first responders, both federal, possibly federal, state, and county in one location where they can not only train, but they can be there in case there's an emergency. It puts these first responders in a place also where there's access to alternative, you know, airfields and airports, so landing areas. So it does put them in that area. And it puts them in a location where it addresses, you know, resiliency planning away from areas where there might be inundation. So it puts them in this area.
There's sort of national concern about these sorts of campuses being developed across the nation. There's a whole lot of protest happening just outside of Atlanta right now over something similar. Those protesters argue that these security centers aren't necessary as these services are already provided by different agencies, and that, you know, we're concerned about the expansion of essentially continued oversight of civilians, you know, when it is clear that voters have chosen against that in the last few decades.
Representative, I'm not familiar with what the concerns are nationally over other facilities like this, but, you know, these, these departments that are proposed to locate in the First Responder Technology Campus already have, most, for most of them, they have facilities already. So these would put these facilities into one facility that in itself would be secure and would provide for that security for these important functions, especially in a situation where there's an emergency.
One last question. What sorts of emergency do you foresee that we would need to spend this much money for to create, you know, to prepare for?
There could be national, you know, natural disasters, other things that could come up. And that, I think that's the, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you. I have a question for HTDC. If Mr. Higashi can come up, please? Thanks, Mr. Nakamoto. I appreciate it.
Thank you, Chair.
Mr. Higashi, I want to just understand, you know, the First Responder Tech Campus, I think is a very grand, long-term vision. It's probably going to take several decades. My understanding was that the focus now for the project is on a new home for Haima, and that was going to be a smaller, much scaled-down version than what the original plan was. Is that correct?
That's what we're calling Phase A1, and it's, you know, dependent on appropriation, right?
Okay.
So we need to start the construction. The basic infrastructure that Mr. Nakamoto was referring to is the basic road that comes in, the sewer lines, the water lines, the electricity lines. But the urgent pressing need, you know, Haima has vocalized, and so has ETS for that matter.
And so is it 50 million just for this Phase A1?
Phase A1 to start the road and the basic infrastructure, which would allow us the opportunity to address the immediate need for Haima and ETS.
Okay, so it's not to build the giant, like, what do you call that?
The entirety of the road is estimated at about $150 million.
Oh.
So we're building the start of the road and the basic infrastructure for it, the grading for it, which would allow the campus to get started.
So this 100 million in this bill won't even get us the full road?
Not, not the entire 100. It's estimated at about 150. If, if you look at the renderings, I'm assuming you're familiar with the renderings.
Right, right. But this is just really to get us to the part where you're going to build the new facilities for Haima?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Higashi, for that question. If I could get Administrator Barros to come up, please? Thanks so much for being here today. Can you please help us understand the need for Haima to relocate?
Our current location in the bunker is World War II facilities. Where we just finished a CIP project to do some lead in from the paint, and then they did some asbestos from the tiles. We're packed in, and it's not a very modern facility. So we are looking at moving to a modern facility. We can, we'll make it work wherever we are, but it would make our job much easier in a modern facility.
What are some of the challenges that you have right now in your current location?
Some of the connectivity issues and the space available. We are tucked into this bunker without the ability to open up the space so that there can be collaboration between all the agencies that would come to the EOC during an emergency.
Right now, I understand you folks are kind of split, actually, between the bunker and then the separate building down below in the crater, building 303.
Yes, ma'am. We're down at the, we're down at 303 right now. And then we're, by the end of the month, we'll go back into the bunker. The problem with 303 is it won't withstand a strong wind or a light hurricane. It's, it's not a hardened facility. Whereas a new facility, we would, it would be hardened and to kind of address some of the other issues. As we develop this campus and we put new buildings on, it's going to be built to code so that it can withstand a hurricane. And that way, first responders, other agencies can hunker down there and then respond. They do, they do have facilities out there where they're located, but not a lot of hardened facilities that we anticipate can withstand a cat tree.
Okay. Thank you very much, Administrator Barros. Members, any other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Appreciate your testimony. Appreciate your testimony. Okay, we're going to move on to the last bill on the agenda, Senate Bill 1064 relating to dam and appurtenance safety. First up, we have testimony from DLNR. Chair Chang.
Good morning, Chair Chiama. Members of the Committee, Don Chang, on behalf of DLNR. We stand in support of this measure and we've offered some comments. Thank you.
Next, we have testimony from Hawaii Farm Bureau. Mr. Miyamoto?
Sorry, Chair. Not sure if I got wider or the aisles got narrower, but it's taking me a while to get through here. Yeah, I think I need to sit at the front. Brian Miyamoto here on behalf of the Hawaii Farm Bureau. We're in strong support of this measure. If you've heard us come before, you're talking about the importance of these water infrastructure, water systems for irrigation, obviously as a farm bureau, but also wildlife habitat, flood control, and even to help wildfires because a lot of these are in the rural areas where it's hard to get water to when we do have these wildfires. So, you know, we do support this. We're concerned that some of these dam owners, reservoir owners may decommission because of the dam safety rules, which are critically important. Let me, I should have prefaced by saying public safety is first and foremost. So, we do appreciate your support and ask that you move this measure forward so that we can offer some assistance to some of these systems who are possibly considering decommissioning their dams and reservoirs. Thank you for the opportunity to testify.
Thank you, Mr. Miyamoto. And to everyone who has signed up to testify on Senate Bill 1064. Anyone else who'd like to offer testimony on this measure? Okay, seeing none, members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, we're going to recess for decision-making. Recession. Okay, thanks, everybody, for coming back on our 9:30 Waterland Agenda for the purposes of decision-making. Thank you so much to all the testifiers for being here this morning. Really appreciate your input. On Senate Bill 44, Senate Draft 2, relating to state water code penalties, recommendation is to pass out a House Draft 1. We're going to defect the date to June 30th, 3,000. We're also going to take the DLNR's proposed amendment to increase the maximum penalty from 25,000 to 60,000. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair, with amendments.
Voting on SB 44, SD 2, with amendments. Chair recommends passing with amendments. Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Chen?
Aye.
Representative Ganaden?
Aye.
Representative Hashim is excused. Representative Morikawa?
Aye.
Representative Takayama?
Aye.
Representative Souza?
Aye.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much, members. Next, moving on to Senate Bill 67, Senate Draft 1, relating to commercial activities on beaches. Recommendation is to pass this out with amendments. We're going to defect the date, June 30th, 3,000, technical non-substantive amendments. We also want to clarify that this is going to apply to Honolulu and Maui County only and not to Hawaii and Kauai County. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 67, SD 1, with amendments. Noting Representative Hashim is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Seeing none, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next, moving on to Senate Bill 298, Senate Draft 1, relating to Hawaii Emergency Management Agency. Recommendation is to pass out with amendments. We're going to take the amendment proposed by OHA on the definition of public lands under Chapter 171-2, defect the date, June 30th, 3,000, as well as technical amendments. Members, any questions? Okay, seeing none, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 298, SD 1, with amendments. Noting Representative Hashim is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Okay, seeing none, the Chair's recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next, Senate Bill 786, Senate Draft 1, relating to search and rescue. Recommendation is to pass out a House Draft 1. We're going to defect the date, June 30th, 3,000, technical non-substantive amendments. We're also going to amend the language on page three, lines nine through 19, to be the same as what we passed out in the House Companion on this bill, which is House Bill 847, House Draft 1. So, allowing the first responders to seek reimbursement for no less than one-half of the cost. And it's going to apply if they leave the hiking trail and enter property that closes, is closed to the public or enter a closed hiking trail with a sign. So, basically the same language that we passed out in our House Bill on this. Members, any questions? Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 786, SD 1, with amendments. Noting Representative Hashim is excused. Are there any no's or reservations?
Reservations.
Noting reservations from Representative Ganaden. The Chair's recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much, members. Next, moving on to Senate Bill 831. Recommendation is to pass out a House Draft 1, defecting the date to June 30th, 3,000. Members, any questions? Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 831, with amendments. Noting Representative Hashim is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Okay, seeing none, the Chair's recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next, Senate Bill 832, Senate Draft 2, relating to education. Recommendation is to pass with a House Draft 1, defecting the date to June 30th, 3,000. We also want to note in the committee report, the concerns from Budget and Finance regarding the commercial activity provision in this bill for the Finance Committee to consider. Members, any questions? Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 832, SD 2, with amendments. Are there, noting Representative Hashim is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Okay, seeing none, the Chair's recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Senate Bill 833, Senate Draft 2, relating to the Wahiwa Irrigation System. Recommendation is to take the request from DLNR and their testimony to move those TMKs to ADC for discussion purposes, knowing that this is a work in progress and that hopefully we'll resolve this as, as we go forward. We're going to defect the date, June 30th, 3,000, technical non-substantive amendments. We're also going to note in the committee report, the funding amounts requested by the agencies. And we're going to keep the amounts blank in the bill. Members, any questions? Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 833, SD 2, with amendments. Noting Representative Hashim is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Okay, seeing none, the Chair's recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next, Senate Bill 1254, Senate Draft 2, relating to the Ka'eevi Coast. Recommendation is to pass out a House Draft 1, adopting the DLNR amendments in their testimony. Basically, we're making this a session law and not codifying it in statute. And there are other amendments that they listed in their testimony. Defect the date, June 30th, as well as technical non-substantive amendments. Members, any questions? Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 1254, SD 2, with amendments. Noting Representative Hashim is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Okay, seeing none, the Chair's recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next, Senate Bill 1286, Senate Draft 1, relating to the Hawaii Community Development Authority. We're going to move this out as a House Draft 1. We're going to make this a pilot project for one parcel in the Kaka'aco District. Defect the date, June 30th, 3,000, as well as technical non-substantive amendments. Members, any questions? Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 1286, SD 1, with amendments. Noting Representative Hashim is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Seeing none, the Chair's recommendation is adopted.
Thank you, members. Next, Senate Bill 1391, Senate Draft 1, relating to administrative penalties on public lands. Recommendation is to re-defect the date to June 30th, 3,000 and pass out as a House Draft 1. Members, any questions? Okay, Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 1391, SD 1, with amendments. Noting Representative Hashim is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Seeing none, the Chair's recommendation is adopted.
Thank you. Next, Senate Bill 1469, Senate Draft 1, relating to the First Responders Technology Campus and Cybersecurity Data Center. You know, I recognize there are some concerns in the community about this project. I do think it is important that we find Ha'ima a new home so that their current home doesn't blow away in a hurricane and we're left without an emergency operations center. So, I would like to keep this discussion going. I am going to blank out the amounts and put it into the committee report and defect the date to June 30th, 3,000. Members, any questions? Comments? Ganaden?
I think that there's a good amount of information and data discussing the ways that community resilience, housing and anti-poverty measures can support various members of our community in the instance of a natural disaster. And so, I think that our tax dollars are better spent in those endeavors. So, I'll be voting no.
Okay, thank you very much for those comments. Members, any other comments? Please, Vice Chair. House Draft 1.
Voting on SB 1469, SD 1, with amendments. Noting Representative Hashim is excused and Representative Ganaden as a no vote. Are there any more no's or reservations?
Reservations, please.
Reservations from Representative Souza. Okay, Chair, your recommendation is adopted.
Thank you very much, members. Next, moving to Senate Bill 1064, relating to dam and appurtenance safety. Recommendation is to re-defect the date, June 30th, 3,000, and put into the committee report, the 220,000 reoccurring funds for the FTEs as well as 15 million in the seed bunny for the dam program fund. Any questions, comments on the dam bill? No? Vice Chair.
Voting on SB 1364, SD 2, with amendments. Noting Representative Hashim is excused. Are there any no's or reservations? Okay, seeing none, the Chair's recommendation is adopted.
Thank you so much, members. We are adjourned. Thank you so much, members. We are adjourned.
Good morning, everybody. Thank you so much to Chair Holt for allowing us to have this joint hearing between the Water-Land Committee and the Committee on Economic Development. This is our 11:15 agenda. We have one bill up for discussion, Senate Bill 837, Senate Draft One relating to the Department of Business, Economic Development, and Tourism. First up, we have testimony from DLNR.
Morning chair, vice chair, members of the committee. Luke Sarviss for DLNR will stand on our written testimony and be available for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Sarviss. Next, we have testimony from DBED.
Good morning, chairs. Dean Wicker, Deputy Director of DBED, standing on our strong support for this measure with an amendment, working with DLNR. We're asking that we also be able to hold title. A few short notes on this. Our department has 14 programs, of which 10 are attached agencies. Several of those attached agencies can already acquire and hold title for their mission and programs, HHFTC, HTDC, HCDAT, ADC. This bill will allow us to help support our core divisions so we can acquire assets, for example, like creative film and media. They can't hold title or acquire. We're looking at property now in Kalailoa as well as possibly the neighbor islands. So this would give us flexibility in acquiring assets to help further our mission economically. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Director Wicker. ADC?
Thank you, chair, as vice chair, Jeremy Nakatani, Agribusiness Corporation. We sent our written testimony showing support. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Nakatani. And it's everybody who signed up to testify on SB 837. Anyone else who would like to offer testimony on this measure? Okay, sitting down members, any questions? Okay, sitting down, we're just going to roll right into decision making. We have quorum for both committees. Okay, for the Committee on Water-Land, the recommendation is to pass out a House draft one. We're going to take the DLNR amendments. We're also going to defect the date to June 30th, 3000, and technical non-substantive amendments. Water-Land members, any questions? Okay, sitting down, vice chair.
Voting on SB 837, SD one with amendments, Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Representative Chen?
Aye.
Representative Ganaden?
Reservations.
Representative Hashem?
Aye.
Representative Morikawa?
Aye.
Representative Takayama?
Aye.
Representative Suda?
Aye. Thank you very much, members. Chair.
You see these same recommendations. Members, any questions? Sitting down, vice chair for the vote.
Voting on SB 837, SD one, recommendation of the chair is to pass with amendments, Vice Chair and Vice Chair vote aye. Member Hasi Burdig?
Reservations.
Member Kong, excused. Member Lachika?
Aye.
Member Nakamura?
Aye.
Member Quillen?
Aye.
And member Pirit?
Reservations.
Chair, your recommendation is adopted. Thank you very much, members. Your turn.